Good afternoon. At this time, I would like to call our City Council Work Session to order. Our first item for discussion is the Clean Communities Commission. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis will be at the podium and introduce our guests for this afternoon. Robert?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. This is a wonderful story. This is one of the groups of people that you all nominate to serve the fellow citizens of the city, and this group does an outstanding job for us. So this afternoon, I've got Ms. Aubrey Dennis, who has a member of the Clean Community Commission since June of 2021. Prior to that, she was a volunteer at many of our commission events, even before she officially became a part of this. Ms. Dennis is originally from the state of Maine and moved to Virginia here in 2010, and she joined our commission because she said she wanted to make a contribution to our city and a positive impact to the community. So Ms. Dennis will come up and make a presentation. Joining her will be Mr. Daniel McDonald. Daniel is our Litter Control Coordinator, so he is our staff liaison that works with this group.
All right. You ready to go? I'm good. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having us here and giving us an opportunity to share a little bit about our program with you all. We're the Suffolk Clean Community Commission. We're also known as Keep Suffolk Beautiful. We are a group of four Keep Suffolk Beautiful Executive Board members, as well as eight Clean Community Commissioners. We're all volunteers, so the whole, all of us just dedicate our time to helping out the city of Suffolk. Daniel McDonald is our secretary. He works for Public Works, and he helps to facilitate our program and provide any support that we might need. Ready? What do we do? So we focus on litter prevention. We encourage recycling, responsible waste disposal. We support beautification to, and encourage people to make our city more beautiful and work on creating some ourself. One of our major programs, these are a couple of our programs, one of our major programs is the Adopt Program. Individuals, families, and businesses can take the time to adopt a street, a park, a space. They agree to help keep that area litter-free. We currently have 46 active groups doing this in this city. We ask that they have four cleanups, and we support them by providing them with the equipment to do so. That includes grabbers, safety vests, bags, gloves, those sorts of things. Another program that's more recent is the Library Litter Kit Program. We partner with the Suffolk Public Library, and each library has kits available. The kit's made up for a family of four, and they can check it out using their library card. These are some of our upcoming community cleanup events. These are the ones that we put on every, every year. We have about 252 people that came out to help at these ones specifically. That equaled about 644 volunteer hours. In these specific events, we removed 277 bags of litter and 27 tires, just at these events alone. These events are really fun. We all enjoy them. The committee enjoys them. The people who come out and volunteer enjoy them. We actually have a good time cleaning up trash. Sounds crazy, but we try to make it fun. Our next event is October 1st. It's the International Coastal Cleanup. We're going to focus this time at cleaning up the downtown section of the Nansimand River. Canoeers and kayakers, they will clean actually on the river, while anybody who's a land-based volunteer who doesn't have access to a kayak or canoe will be cleaning up the banks behind the local businesses. And we'd love to see any of you out there. You're more than welcome to attend. We partner with all types of organizations. This is one that we partner with, the Western Tidewater Community Services Board. They've been helping us with varying beautification projects here. Since February, they have been cleaning bus shelters, painting guardrails, and they've collected 146 bags of litter from the downtown area. These are some of our statistics from this year, comparing this financial year with last. So as you can see, we, we've made big gains this year. It's pretty impressive, and our volunteerism has really picked up. It's pretty exciting. I'm sure all of you have heard of our recycling drives. They're big. People look forward to them. We publicize them as much as we can. We host three a year, two in the downtown area, and one in North Suffolk. And these are some of the people that, some of the organizations that we partner with for that event. And these are some of the items that we collect at the drives. On average, we get about 350 vehicles that come through each drive. We collect things like propane tanks. We shred documents. We collect cell phones, U.S. flags. All the items are either recycled, responsibly disposed of, or, for example, the U.S. flags are actually retired respectfully by the Scouts. It's a great, it's a great event. This is what we actually collected from the three drives during the last financial year. So I don't need to read it till I give you a second to, to look at it. Our next drive is at Nansimand River High School on September 17th. And again, you're welcome to come out if you have anything you need to dispose of or recycle, and, or just come see what we do. Tire amnesty is another popular thing that we do. It's an opportunity for residents to drop off unwanted tires that they have. We don't have a limit. They can bring out as many as they have, but they have to be less than 42 inches. Two tire amnesty events are always held at the downtown recycling events, at Public Works operations on Carolina Road, and the next one is November 12th. And this is kind of a fun little statistic. This is the most tires ever collected at one tire amnesty, and this was back in 2017. And if you do the math, it's more than 10 tires a minute. So beautification is another focus of our program, and we do things like paint murals, plant trees. We worked with Parks and Rec and Healthy Suffolk to transform that community garden at East Suffolk Recreation. Keep Virginia Beautiful actually gave a grant so that we could purchase the beds, a shed, a bench, and a pergola. In March, we partnered with Nansimand Suffolk Academy. They came out and helped make some improvements at Holland Park, and the students painted on that dumpster, which was pretty creative. They stained the fence, painted trim shrubs. What else did they do? Did a litter cleanup across into the Village of Holland. So there's some of their, their giving back. Recently, we partnered with the Suffolk Art League to transform a rusty guardrail in the Kingsborough neighborhood. Volunteers prepped the guardrail, and then we, at Keep Suffolk Beautiful, commissioned a local artist to paint the guardrail. And we have a video to play for this. Center. We do a lot of education outreach. It's a big part of what we like to do, to try to think of unique ways to talk to people in the community. Here are a couple of examples of using art to spread our message. So some volunteers made a mural out of a thousand, out of thousands of plastic bottle tops. It may, it traveled around schools and libraries and raised awareness of single-use plastics. The other example there, whoops, sorry. That was my fault. The other example are two sculptures that were made. They were filled with balloons that washed up on Virginia beaches. The sculptures were made by the students at the Prudence Center, and the balloons came from Longwood University, who did a study on the large amounts of balloons washing up on the beaches. And it just educated about, educated people about the awareness of marine debris. And these sculptures traveled across Hampton Roads to many venues, the Virginia Beach Aquarium, Nauticus, the Slover Library, the Norfolk Botanical Gardens, and to many Suffolk schools. And they're kind of pretty, considering they're trash. Last financial year, we received $15,750 from council. Thank you very much. And this is how we spend our money. The recycling drives and the tire amnesty, as you can see, account for a large part of what our expenses are. Document shredding is also expensive, and so is the disposal cost for shredding tires. But if you look at the cost, 3,241 and 1/2 hours of labor is a value of $97,082.93. Your return on investment is a $6.16 value per dollar budgeted. This financial year, we received $20,000, which we greatly appreciate. We're very excited to see what we can do with a little bit more. And with that, on behalf of Keep Suffolk Beautiful, I'd like to thank you for taking time to hear about all of our different programs. Well, a few of our programs, not all of them. We meet once a month here at City Hall. You are, any, any of you are welcome to attend. The public's welcome to attend. We are in the City Council Chamber Conference Room on the third Monday of the month at 6:00. We also have a Facebook page and an Instagram account, which anybody can follow. We'd love for you to follow, share our events, maybe get some more volunteers out to join us. And then I'll leave you with a little montage of some of the fantastic people who come to our events and make everything that we do possible.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Council. Any questions or comments? Councilman Johnson?
In the world today where it's so hard to get people to volunteer, you guys are being so successful, and I think it's because the program is performing so well. And as a city, we, we couldn't thank you more. It truly is a blessing that we have you people doing this. Churches can't even get volunteers anymore. So for us to get volunteers out there, it's pretty remarkable, and it looks like a lot of good volunteers. So I, for one, am so appreciative of what you guys do and look forward to the future. Any way we can help you, I'm sure everybody up here would love to. So thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Fossett?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, that was a great presentation. I really enjoyed seeing the many different things that y'all are, are involved in and working on and trying to keep it. Every Suffolkian ought to appreciate everything y'all are doing. You think back, what would it look like if they weren't, if this wasn't happening? If there was nobody out there doing what these volunteers are doing? Because they're not doing just one specific thing. They're doing a whole spectrum of things. You know, one of the things that jumped out was the outreach program. To take that, balloons and top, bottle tops and stuff, and convert it into a mural type or whatever you want to call it, is impressive, and there are some very creative groups out there, it looks like. I'm very proud that we have a group in our city that takes and moves and comes forward to help out and do this, because the trash is going to have to go somewhere. The beautification's not going to happen on its own. So thank you, and thank each and every one of you, and all of them that participate. I really, truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say the same thing. Thank y'all very much for, for the effort y'all make and the volunteers that you deal with and help. It makes the city so much better, and as what Councilman Fossett said, where would we be if you weren't there doing it? And you do it quietly. I mean, you just go get it done, and I'm really proud of you, and thank y'all very much for your effort and your leadership.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you. I also would like to thank you all for all you do. I come to a lot of your recycling dump-off and the number of tires and stuff that you all are collecting, that I usually, before you start doing that, will see them stroll all out through the country roads and whatnot. So I think that has really, really has improved quite a bit, and I can't thank you all enough for that and all the other recyclable stuff that you do, electronic stuff and paint, hazardous stuff. And every time I come out there, it's a line, and people really are participating, and I think that's great, that you're offering that to the citizen. Maybe they will use it more than dumping it someplace that it's not needed. So again, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
Councilperson Butler-Balda?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you all, so you all do so much. And one of the things I wanted to say is the creativity, you know, such great projects, and of course, I have a soft spot for the East Suffolk Garden, and it's just such a beautiful spot, and the dumpster painting just kind of adds so much. So just appreciate you all's creativity. I also wanted to say, you didn't mention your volunteer appreciation dinner, and I know it was a big presentation, but was able to attend that event and really enjoyed it, and think it was very much appreciated by all those folks that, that do help out. It was a really nice evening. Hope y'all will continue to do that. So thanks again for everything you do.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll just kind of piggyback on what everyone said. I was more than impressed. Councilperson Butler-Balda alluded to the volunteer appreciation event that you had at, at Planters Club, and I couldn't believe how many folks were there and the diversity of the individuals that were there. I mean, there's volunteers from throughout our city, and the fact that you've collected 23 tons of debris and tires is just an amazing feat in itself. And I always say, first impressions are lasting impressions, and lots of times, individuals, when they're driving into our city, I mean, I've had some folks complain about one thing or another, but when you come in and you don't see litter and you don't see trash, it sends a statement, and you provide an invaluable service over and above we can do as, as a city. And I, I know some of your volunteers in particular, and they are probably as a committed group of volunteers as I've ever seen. They're passionate about what they do, and I appreciate the time that you put in. Jamie, your oversight and willing, working with the volunteers, and as has been mentioned, anything that we can do to help you, we're here, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next topic for discussion this afternoon will be an update on our mosquito control program. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works, will present the mosquito control program update. I know it's getting sort of late in the year when we talk about the weather for mosquitoes, but we've had a couple instances recently. We thought it would be good to brief Council on that. Robert?
Certainly, we had hoped to have Mr. Aberdam, our mosquito control superintendent here this evening. He's got some medical issues, kept him from being there, and I'm certainly not quite as entertaining as Charles usually is, but I will try to follow in. So as the manager noted, we just thought it was a good time to kind of give a little update on mosquito control, because it's been a very unique year. Certainly, we focus in on surveillance and pesticide application as appropriate, but one of the things that we have noticed this, this year that's very interesting is, we started collecting records here in about 2011 here in the city, so we really started keeping thorough records. That's when we really instituted mosquito control to the level that it is today with the professional staff and all the programs. And of course, also before 2011, it was sporadic in the city as to what areas were covered and what areas were not, and now our program is citywide. One of the most interesting things that I'll share with you this year is, this year is very different than most years in the past. So currently, we're experiencing the lowest season on record with 68,000 mosquitoes caught versus our low year before this was 84,000. So we're 16,000 mosquitoes in our traps below what we normally see, which is an amazing number. On an average year, like 2016 was, we're usually somewhere around 250, 249,000 mosquitoes by this time, and in 2022, today, we only had 181,000 mosquitoes total had been caught. Also, it's amazing to be this late in the year and our numbers still be as low as they are. One of the trends is, we try to figure out why is that? Well, certainly, this has been a very unique year from a weather standpoint. It's been dry. The rains that we've gotten have been very sporadic. It's not given a lot of opportunity for mosquitoes to reproduce. And that's not to say there's not any mosquitoes out there. We're not getting any complaints, but the overall numbers across the city are much lower than we've ever experienced before. Again, this is just a graph that just kind of highlights those numbers on the previous slide, and again, you can just see, it's, it's pretty amazing compared to a wet year, which 2014 was, compared to this year, how those numbers look. But again, it's, it's just amazing year. So the manager mentioned disease detection. That's an issue, that's one of the reasons why we track mosquitoes and try to control them, because they're vectors that carry certain diseases in our community. So this year, we've actually detected West Nile virus in two mosquito pools, and so again, this is the second lowest year since we've been keeping records that we've collected, seen that low amount of West Nile virus. But it's also the latest that we've ever seen this show up. So what do we do when these show up? We did have a couple of positives here recently. We, we monitor that. So if we get two positives within a short period of time and a location, we go out and we try to break that cycle of transmission. Sometimes that's spraying pesticides airily that kill adult mosquitoes, but also a lot of what we do is, we try to be much more kind to the environment, and we try to put insecticides down into the pools of water to prevent them from reproducing. So it's a whole lot easier to keep them from ever hatching out than it is to try to kill them once they're up and done. So again, we've had, had it show up near Planters Peanuts, just south of there, and a spot in North Jericho next to Kingsborough, where again, it's shown up. And again, we continue, we've treated those areas, but we continue to monitor those, just making sure that we've got it under control and that it doesn't show up anywhere else in the city. So one of, one of the anecdotes I'll share with you on that is, again, I mentioned, just because we have extremely low numbers does not mean we have no complaints. So we certainly get calls occasionally from citizens that say, hey, I got mosquitoes. What can you do to help me? My staff will actually go out, they'll set a time to meet the homeowner, and they'll do an inspection of the property. What we find almost exclusively in situations like that is those mosquitoes are being bred on their property. So it's, it's a pond of water. It's a fish pond. It's a, it's a rain barrel somewhere that's left open to the environment that the mosquitoes have gotten in. It's a flower pot, and a lot of flower pots have the little extra bowls at the bottom, the whole water to keep it in. A lot of times, it's just a matter of dumping those out. Sometimes it's even gutters. And what'd be as amazing is, there's certain mosquitoes that will actually live in shrubbery. So sometimes it's a matter of treating those areas right around the home, and the problem goes away. So again, that service is still out there. We're still monitoring that, and I would be remiss if I did not talk about the infamous mosquito ducts that are available to every citizen in the city. Go by the library, go by the fire station, you're entitled to these. These go into standing water, and what this is, this is actually a biological control that allows us to break the cycle of reproduction for these mosquitoes. So we're not killing mosquitoes, we're preventing them from reproducing with this material. And with that, I'm certainly available if there's any questions that Council may have specifically about the mosquito control program this year.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, I noticed on the chart, like 214 was a, was a large, a large amount, and 216, there was a, did we happen to have at that time like a hurricane or a storm or something that might have caused that to be so high?
I'm guessing we probably did. I did not have the opportunity to look at those historic records, but Mr. Aberdam could probably have meant. But yes, I would say those are wetter than normal summers, and that's why those numbers have been elevated.
All right. Thank you.
Sometimes it could be a specific event, like a hurricane. Sometimes it could just be one of those summers where we get in a cycle where we have a lot of rain, thunderstorms moving through, and again, we keep the, the amount of water up on the ground that allows it to reproduce. Yes, sir.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I know, you know, one, one time, you go in the community, y'all go in the community spraying?
Again, as, as the need arises, if we identify our need and we need to spray, so we don't indiscriminately spray. We don't just ride through the city and spray pesticides all over our city, and, and again, we're trying to be kind to the environment. We're trying to be kind to the bees and the pollinators out there. So if we detect a bunch of live adult mosquitoes flying around, we would go in and take the appropriate action. Sometimes that is spraying the adulticide, the spray that you're talking about. Sometimes there's other methods we can go about to try to break that cycle.
Well, I know we had a call, I think I talked to Al about, they had some complaints in Burgess Grant, so I don't know if y'all done that already.
Yes, sir. Again, all those calls come in, we investigate them, and we take appropriate action.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, any other questions or comments? I've just got one observation. I, too, have noticed that this year, for whatever reason, there are very, very few mosquitoes compared to the past. And secondly, and this is more of a question, who's responsible and how does one go about counting 389,000 mosquitoes?
We, we actually have staff that gets very excited about it, so there's a process that if anybody in Council is interested, I can show you all about how we collect those.
You'll line them up or anything?
And then how we euthanize them, and then we put them on a, on a microscope, and people look. Not only do they count them, they tell you which species they are.
Oh, Lord.
To me, they're all, they're only species, the kind that bite, but they can tell you all the different species of those mosquitoes and how many. Because again, from the species, they can tell you where they're reproducing. Certain mosquitoes reproduce in a certain environment and not in others. So again, that also tells them, back to Councilman Ward's question, what is the appropriate way to treat, to break the life cycle of a specific type of mosquito when that's the predominant mosquito and the others are not present? So yes, there are people that sit and count mosquitoes all day.
I'll have to check that in the job descriptions next time. We're doing a budget mosquito counter. May want to be worth a little bit more. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
That concludes our work session. I understand that we do have a motion for a closed meeting. Madam Clark, if you would be so kind to read the motion for consideration.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments as shown in the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Western Tidewater Water Authority. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 3 and A8, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding tax map parcel 10 asterisk 46.
Council motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fossett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fossett. Councilman Williams?
Second, Ed, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. That must not coming up. A little malfunction here. There we go. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.